Say go. Bonsoir, good evening, and welcome to the February 14th council meeting. I have a moment of personal reflection. Thank you. Please stand for the National Anthem, Council Gardiner.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land, too paved with love and all of us common. Car ton bras sé porter les pays, ils sé porter la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants explorés. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, Council Gardiner. The acting mayor for the month of February is Councilor Claude McIntosh. I only read it. We acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Akwaasasne. Role call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Glenn Grant.
Present.
Councilors Claude McIntosh.
Here.
Dennis Carr.
Here.
Seth Gardner.
You see.
Dean Hollingsworth.
Present.
Caroline Ebbay.
Present.
Councilors Maurice Dupell.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Elaine McDonald.
Present.
Justin Towndale.
Present.
And Eric Bergeron.
Present.
Councilor Todd Bennett sends his regrets, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any additions, deletions, or amendments?
I have one, Mr. Mayor, and that would be the addition of bylaw 2022-019 to accept transfer for widening at 201 Le May.
I have a motion.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, that would make our confirming bylaw now number 2022-020.
I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Council McDonald, Council McIntosh, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Any disclosure of interest for this next meeting? Motion to go in the committee of the whole. Council Gardiner, Council Dupell, all in favor? Perused, Carrie, thank you. Madam Clerk?
We now have the adoption of the minutes, January 24th, January 25th, and January 26th.
Motion, Council Towndale, Council McDonald, all in favor? Opposed, Carrie, thank you.
So there are no presentations nor delegations this evening, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to the consent reports. The first one is a proclamation with a recommendation that council proclaim the month of February 2022 as le mois de l'histoire des noirs, Black History Month, in the city of Cornwall. RFP terms of reference for design and construction administration services for the affordable housing stacked townhouses with a recommendation that council receive this report. RFP terms of reference for 2022 P01 engineering services for wall water intake infrastructure upgrades with a recommendation that council receive this report. And our last one, legal use of stop sign cameras on school buses with a recommendation that council support the legislation to allow the legal and lawful use of stop sign cameras on school buses.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion to accept the consent. Council McDonald, Council Gardiner, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
There are no resolutions, so for the reports for unfinished business. The first one is Vincent Massey Drive at Tollgate Road West intersection with a recommendation that council receive this report.
Motion, Council McDonald, second by. Council Dupell, all in... Yes, Council?
I just want to make a comment, Your Worship. I'm not going to support the motion to receive. I understand the premise. My fear is that if we don't add it to the 2022 budget, and I get it hasn't been budgeted for, and I've got some ideas how to get around that, but my fear is that if we wait, that this corner is not a safe corner, and even the report admits that it's not designed property. It's not. And I don't want to wait till 2023, and quite frankly, if we wait and make up composition of council changes, which it typically does, my fear is that it's just going to get lost somewhere in the shuffle, and so I am sure council's going to probably vote to receive it, but I for one am not going to vote in favor of that, and I just wanted that to be articulated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Indigenous awareness training with a recommendation that council receive this report.
Motion, Council McDonald, second, Council Bergeron, Council McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to thank Ms. Adams for arranging the first session we had. I thought it was very, just excellent. Hugely long, but very well worth it. Now, I'm wondering for this second one, I guess it's going to be specific history of Akwaasasne, and I'm hoping that maybe that could be conducted, because it's going to be conducted by personnel from Akwaasasne. Could it happen on Akwaasasne, for example, either in the Turtle Dome, or at the Traveling College, or some place of their choice, but it would be, or even the senior center there, there's a new one that's very large enough to conduct a session like this. So I'm just throwing it out there, I hope we can manage that.
Madam CEO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's an excellent idea if public health guidelines allow us to have a meeting like that in their premises, and if we're able to, so I think that's excellent. I will certainly make note of that and take that back. I mean, from a proximity perspective, it should be relatively straightforward and easy for us to have the meeting on Akwaasasne, so I think that's a good idea.
Any other comments? Council McIntosh?
I found the training very informative. It was lengthy, which is hard to stay tuned, at least after the first two. I was just wondering, there's only eight months left in this term for most of us, and we'll have a new council. Will this become an annual thing, that each council will go through this training, or is this just a one-shot deal?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a really good question. I think that parts of it maybe could be done again with future councils as member changes. We also, I think amongst administration that participated in that session, I think we also think it'd be beneficial if more of our employees were able to, maybe not that length of the version that we had last week, but maybe something that's a little bit shorter that would make it easier for more people to at least gain some insight and training. So I think the answer to the question is, I think we should be doing something probably ongoing with new councils and with changes in our employees as well.
Yeah, I would think that earlier in the term, the better, rather than, you know, this came late. We kicked it around for what, two or three years, but then again, we had a thing called COVID that kind of threw a hurdle at us, but I think if the new council comes in, I would think, I would like to see it, I'd like to see it. Maybe it should be within six months of that council's mandate.
Any other, yes, Council Gardiner?
I just want to thank you, Maureen, for pulling this all together. There were a lot of people involved that night. I had read the book that was left in our mailbox, and I learned from that book, but I also learned some personal experiences from the speakers, and that was extra knowledge that I didn't have from the book, so thank you very much for pulling that together, and hopefully it will continue.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion? Opposed, carried. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we are now looking for a motion to receive the unfinished business listing for February 14th.
Motion? Council McDonald, Council Gardiner, all in favor? Oh, go ahead, Dean.
Thank you, Your Worship. Kind of, sort of, I'm finished. I was driving down Ninth Street the other day, and I noticed that the engine is still there, and I thought it was supposed, now, I personally would prefer to not to see it, like, eliminated, but, like, what's happening with that? I thought it was kind of supposed to be gone by now.
Madam Clerk?
After that meeting, documentation was collected from the public, their opinions, and they were sent to what used to be, I believe, the municipal board, which is not called that anymore.
Right.
Tribunal, so that was sent to them, but they need everything put in a specific format, and that is being done now. It's going to be sent into that tribunal for them to let us know what they think about that.
So we're waiting for the new version of the OMB to tell us if we can do this or not?
Yes, correct.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. Council McIntosh?
Following up what Dean just said, I had made a motion that we give Wes Libby's group more time, and that what Madam Clerk just said was part of it, but they were, they said they could start a fundraiser to help pay for the cost, and I haven't heard a thing back from them since, but I know I did make a motion to give them more time, and I think that's what Madam Clerk was talking about, too. These documents, you go through this ladder of things.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So they had requested for more time, but the process was already in the works. Motion had been made by council, and so he had his opportunity at that point to make objections, which were made, and they're included in all those comments that are being sent in.
Yeah, thanks for refreshing my memory on that one. I forgot about it.
All in favor of the motion? Opposed, carried. Thank you.
Communication item, FCM's Green Municipal Fund Capital Project, new construction of energy-efficient facilities, with a recommendation that council approve the submission of a full application to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Green Municipal Fund Capital Project, new construction of energy-efficient facilities, and that the project submitted for the funding program be the new Municipal Works Administration and Multi-Use Buildings.
Motion? Council Dupell and Council McDonald, any discussion? Council McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if we've ever received a green municipal fund, like, a grant from the, from the fund, rather.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We've never received, to my knowledge anyway, funding from this specific program. We have received green funding before, but not from this specific program, to my knowledge.
And did you apply for a certain amount, or I see here 30%, for example, of the design stage concept or whatever, so is it just kind of a vague request you made, or...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we've applied for the maximum amount of funding available through the program. They will offer us a $5 million loan, and 15% of that is, could be up for a grant, so this is what the application is for. We intend on making a presentation to council about the project at the next meeting, or, sorry, the March 28th meeting.
Well, may we be successful?
Council Gardiner?
Basically, I wanted to ask the same question, and it's about time. We've never received money from them, and this is a good project, and I think, I hope, we receive some money from FCM for the first time.
Thank you. Council McIntosh?
In the report, it talks about reaching our goal of zero carbon, a zero-carbon city. I know this is dear to Council Bergeron's heart. I just wonder, do we have any timelines on this? This is the first step toward that goal? And is, do we have timelines on what would be next, and where we're going with this?
Madam CEO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't, sorry, I don't think we'd be able to respond to your question this evening, but we could probably bring a report back to council with the work that's being done through the committee and some of those initiatives, but I don't, I'm sorry, I can't answer your question.
Yeah, no, I just, I hear about Canada's goal, I think it was 2035. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's something in that range. So obviously, we're moving in that direction, and we're going to start electrical vehicles, it'll be one of the things involved here, and also buildings like this, changing it over from carbon-based to heating to, just saying, that doesn't sound, you know, it sounds like a long time, but it is a long time when you get into it. Maybe, I don't know, see a plan of action in the next couple of years, but I won't be on council to see that, but that might be something that we should sit down, really give some serious thought, serious thought, too. Just a thought.
Council Carr?
Just checking to see if my microphone works, that's all. I believe several years ago, during the construction of the condos down at the waterfront, that applications were made for green funding. I'm not sure, I thought it was somewhat successful, but it wasn't the city so much who applied for the funding, it was the designers and the buildings of those buildings down there, but they did apply for funding, and maybe someone can remember that far back. I guess not. I think I'm the only one still living who was around when they did that. Oh, sorry, Sid is here, too. Thank you. I'll find out.
All in favor of the motion? Opposed, carried. Thank you.
There are no new business motions, Mr. Mayor, so moving on to bylaws. Bylaws 2022-16 to 19 inclusive listed on the agenda are being presented to council for adoption.
Motion, Council Ebert, Council Gardiner, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you.
Now, we are at the reports from standing advisory, special, and head-up committees, Mr. Mayor.
No reports? Moving on?
Notice of motion?
Council Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to make a notice of motion, that being the municipal class environmental assessment for the intersection of Vincent Massey Drive and Tollgate Road West be added to the 2021, 2022 municipal budget, if I can get a second.
Council Towndale?
So under notice of motion, Mr. Mayor, there are no discussions this evening. It'll be included on the agenda as a resolution February 28th.
All right. Council McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I beg your indulgence on this. We had a really good news announcement in the consent reports, and I was prepared to ask some questions, but I forgot in time to ask that it be pulled from consent and put in communication. It has to do with the affordable housing project on Pitt Street, and I just wonder, we're due to have a record time meeting, if I can take about three minutes just to ask some questions of Ms. Morgan.
Well, what we'll do is, we'll get a motion to suspend the rules, and we need two-thirds majority, so. Motion, Council Bergeron, Council Ebert, all in favor? Carry?
I thank my colleagues, because this is a very exciting project, and when you consider the timeline, I think it's very ambitious and wonderful, because we've got one big project coming down the line, and this one, I see that you're looking at a completion date of first March, and I think September of 2023. That's fabulous. Your department must be just working around the clock, but, and I had a couple of specific questions. I'm sure, yes, they are working around the clock on this. So they're going to be affordable houses, there's going to be 48 units, I gathered, and there's stacked townhouses? I don't understand the stacked bit. I get the affordable housing, but what's a stacked townhouse?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's, basically, they're just one townhouse on top of another, and we're going to make, we're going to construct six eight-unit, two-bedroom stacked townhouses.
Okay, so that's, would be like the townhouses I think we have down on First Street behind Melody Mews. Okay, thank you, got that picture. So I wanted to ask, too, about the apartments. They seem kind of small to me, and so I'm presuming you're targeting this for maybe single individuals or small families, and I'm just wondering if in the whole Cornwallian area housing portfolio, are you abandoning something bigger, like, say, a three-bedroom apartment? You're really not catering to families with this build, are you?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Not necessarily. Would depend on the size of the family. Certainly, a family of up to four could occupy one of those units. We have yet to determine the demographic of the 48 units, how many will be RGI versus affordable versus market, as well as the number of accessible units. It is our intent to make the end units somewhat larger than the interior units for the purposes of accessibility.
Okay, great. So I was going to ask, too, like, some of the apartments would be 750 square feet to 850. Those are considered interior units, but the exterior units will be 950 to 1,000 square feet?
Correct.
Are those the ones you mean, is the accessible ones?
That's correct.
Okay, so they'll all be on the ground floor, too, like?
The accessible units would be on the ground floor.
Sure.
But the exterior units would be the larger units, with the upper exterior units being more for the market tenants.
Yeah, and I really appreciate your foresight in terms of meeting environmental objectives, that you're actually asking the designer to come in with designs that show the insulation, for example, going beyond the current code, so you're really looking at building for the long term here. And congratulations for having, at least asking, for balconies on every unit. I think we kind of missed the boat on McConnell and Ninth on that, but I'm happy that it's built into this design. Thank you. Congratulations. This is such great news.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council McDonald.
Next is the confirming bylaw. We're looking for a motion to adopt the confirming bylaw.
Motion, Council McIntosh, Council Dupell, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Now, before we adjourn, there's, Madam CEO has a couple of announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would like to welcome Janelle Malien to our meeting this evening. She has joined us online, but this is our first meeting in person, so Janelle is our new deputy clerk, so welcome. Look forward to working with Janelle. And I would also like to recognize Frances Racine is with us this evening. Frances joins us as our communications officer. Frances has been to many of our council meetings, however, this is her first council meeting with us in the form of a role of administration, so we look forward to having him as part of our team. You're going to see more, you'll see more communications come out via Frances, but we're looking forward to working with him, and we'd like to welcome him, and so, yeah.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, through you, I'd like to just warn Racine not to come much closer than he is already. He was at the back before. He's moving towards the front here, and I don't know, he may be running in the next election.
He's got a yellow seat.
Yeah.
Welcome. I'm sure council will welcome you as well. Everyone gives a kudos. Thank you. Also, before we adjourn, I want to wish everyone Happy Valentine's Day, and it's nice day like this that we can see a little bit of love, rather than the confrontation that we've seen in the last while, so show the love there, Carr. I have a motion to adjourn. Council McDonald, Council Dupell, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. Good meeting, everyone. Opposed, carried. Thank you. Good meeting, everyone.